Okay. No minutes in the package.
What, please? Should have October 2nd.
I didn't see any of that.
Then you'll get them next.
I'll do it the next month. That's Jim's fault.
I'm still desperate I do.
They're really trying to shorten this meeting up. There are no road encroachments, I don't believe. So Perry Conservation Easement, Paul, would you address that, please?
Gotcha. So I guess I would start by reminding the board that we decided about eight months ago that conservation easements would now be addressed at your public meetings, thus why it's noted on the agenda. This is a conservation easement proposed between Joe L. Perry, Deborah L. Perry, and the Montana Land Reliance. This one is a total of 640 acres, of which I think it would only be appropriate for us to be commenting on the portion that's within Teton County, which is a 160-acre piece of the whole 640.
With 160 acres being one.
In Teton County, yeah. So I did put together a map to show you location and how it sits in relation to other conservation easements. So just to let you know, this is the web. This is our RTIS online homepage, which most of you have probably seen. You'll notice that I'm signed in, so then I can go to all my maps here, not just the ones that I've chosen to make public. So this one, I just created this this week to give you a quick look at location. And Mel already asked me at 6.5 miles east of Shoto. So all of the grayish green are existing easements in Teton County. And this information, if you, you know, if you look at any of these layers, this is a layer that I've downloaded, USA National Conservation Easement lands. So it's all, all the easements throughout. Probably North America, I don't know for sure. I didn't zoom out that far. But kind of the neat thing is that you can zoom out and say, okay, just in, in relation to the whole state, what's going on with conservation easements. And you can see this being roughly in Teton County that we have a pretty good amount in, in terms of total easements throughout the state of Montana. This one, it's this 160-acre piece outlined in red. So as we zoom in, the other thing, so that, the parcel layer comes up and indicates who the owner of the property is. So there's the cadastral information on it, for instance. And Jill L. and Debbie Perry owners. But the other thing that this map allows you to do is to say, okay, I want to change the base map from just a road layer. I want to see the imagery. The imagery is, again, dated. This is probably roughly 2015 or 16 imagery. But it does show you what the current land use is. No structures currently on the property when the photograph was taken. And you can see that it's cropland. Okay, so that's just a quick overview. I guess one thing that I would point out, and I think it's pretty apparent, is the location in relation to other easements and the type of land use. We don't normally get a whole lot of conservation easements on cropland. In fact, you know, there might be some exceptions. And like the last one that we looked at, I would say was probably for Mary Sexton's property. And that probably had some cropland in it. But I think that's what made that one somewhat complicated is that there were at least two grantors of that particular conservation easement to make it all fit. In other words, it, it didn't fit in with all their conservation goals. This one fits with Montana Land Reliance conservation goals. The actual document, a few of the things that I highlighted is that in the agreement, they quote the Teton County Growth Policy Plan adopted in 2003. The last time Montana Land Reliance did a conservation easement, I provided the same comment, that we've updated that growth policy since 2003. Please quit quoting an out-of-date document. And yet here it is again. So I guess I'll make the same comment on that again. It is in perpetuity, which is pretty much standard for conservation easements. Open space land use is one of the top priorities. So that's a pretty general statement. I didn't notice anything in the uses that were prohibited that really stand out. There is a five-acre building envelope so that, and that's in the, well, one, it's in this document, but it's in the northwest corner of that 160 acres. So they can put a residence and outbuildings and that kind of thing. But it's in a very specific location in terms of the total 160 acres. So I guess with that, it does, let's see what they're saying. Permitted uses, I know that surface mining is something that we've talked about in the past with these. Surface mining is prohibited with the exception of, for their own, for their own use. For instance, gravel, they could have a gravel pit for their own use. Commercial uses are not, or are prohibited. They highlighted transfer of, oh, so the transfer of land, that's probably, it's kind of a given with conservation easements, but it cannot be subdivided anymore than, there's three parcels in this. But that 160 is considered one parcel, and it can't be transferred as five parcels or two parcels or any, anything other than that 160-acre parcel. Conservation easement continues with the next person that buys it. Does say that utilities will be buried where technically and economically feasible. I guess that's all I had highlighted. Any questions on this? Or do you want to provide some comments that you want to pass along?
I just have a question. Commercial uses are prohibited. So if a guy technically, if you're a bird hunter guy, you couldn't go out there.
That's correct.
And I would know that we have a great deal of guided bird hunts in this country. And I'm not aware of any gravel on that parcel gumbo.
Do they address the farming? So their conservation, I mean, is there any restrictions on the farming?
They mentioned agricultural use, Joe, but I don't think that they go into any fine detail on specific practices.
So they don't, they don't restrict that then?
No.
They reference pre-existing easements, utility easements and such?
What's that?
Do they reference pre-existing utility easements?
They, in terms of, they, they don't specifically. My guess would be anything that's pre-existing is going to be part of this whole process. So I, I don't think that they can say, oh, wow. It doesn't specifically say, guess what? An existing easement, we want that to, to go away.
Normally, don't they have a paragraph in there saying that they recognize if there's any existing county roads or easements, they?
Yeah.
There's usually a disclaimer paragraph in there that recognizes those.
And this is a 24-page document. So even though I read it, not all of it is committed to memory.
They organize the whole thing out? Well, there's normally a disclaimer paragraph in there that recognizes pre-existing easements.
All right, anybody have any other questions, Paul? Like Paul said, we just review it. We have no, we don't take action on it or whatever. We just review it and comment.
So I guess I just would, you know, going forward, this is an opportunity, I would say, for anybody attending this meeting to comment on this. I think that's the idea behind having this meeting. So if there are any other comments, I'm certainly ready to take notes here. But they are just being passed along to the Montana Land Reliance, so.
One observation that I have is that's probably one of the first ones east of Highway 89.
Yeah, you know, again, that Sexton would be, that's kind of close. And it is technically just east. But yeah, you'll see, I mean, that, this one's quite a, quite a ways. So the Sexton one would be sitting right about where my cursor is here. So yeah, this is a little bit different.
All right, anybody have any other comments, concerns? Well, thank you, Paul.
You bet.
All righty. And Tracy sent me an email and wanted to know if she could give us an update on the Sun River watershed. So sure. Take it away, Tracy.
Thanks. Yeah, last time I was out here, it was to ask for support for our gauges. And you guys generously issued, issued us a check to help support gauges. So thanks so much for that. And this time I'm not asking for anything. I just wanted to let you guys know what we're up to. So our, we completed our strategic plan. Last time I was out, I mentioned that we were working on this. I brought you each a copy. You have one of these, or do you want another one?
Yeah.
Great. And then, so this is basically our board work together with our partners to come up with our strategic, we revised our mission statement, came up with some strategic goals and some tasks associated with those goals to give us kind of a broad guideline for our projects to, to help us prioritize what kind of work we want to get done in the next few years. So when you have time, take a look at that. And, and that'll give you a general idea of what, what we'll be doing. We, I just found out that we will have a Big Sky Watershed Corps member next year, which means there, it's like the, it's a part of the AmeriCorps program, if you're not familiar. So they work for us for 10 months, and they receive a small stipend, basically covered their living expenses. And then they get a tuition credit from the program down the road. So they'll be helping, helping me, which is really nice. They'll be, I'll have them focusing on our, our flow management and like our gauges and our weeds and water quality programs. They'll be helping me with those three especially. The nice thing is, once I get them going on something, they can work pretty independently, and it'll free me up to pursue grants and projects and stuff. So it'll be some extra support. I'm pretty excited about that. We also were awarded through Cascade Conservation District a 223 grant to do a channel migration zone map. So that'll be a map of about 100 miles of the Sun River. And it'll be publicly available when it's all done. We'll have a public meeting to show folks what we're working on and get some input. But the general idea is to, to map the historic routes of the channel of the Sun River, because as you know, it moves around a lot. So it will show historically the, the path of the main channel. And then also, based on that, it will help project some possible hazard areas. So it, it'll be a planning tool. So where might we want to protect infrastructure? Where would we maybe not want to put new infrastructure? You know, that kind of thing. So it should help, be a good tool for landowners and municipalities and, and anyone. Hopefully, it'll help us guide habitat work. You know, we don't want to sink a bunch of money into putting, you know, improvement someplace where it's high-risk and it's probably going to move in the next high-water event. So, so I'm excited for that. I'm going to be soliciting some folks for quotes on that this month. So starting off on that pretty, pretty soon. We have a project in, Dwayne's place is in Teton County. I forgot to look. Yeah, I thought so. At Dwayne Seven's place, we're working on a grazing management plan to put some fencing up and move cattle out of the water. And then we'll do some revegetation and stuff up there. So that will hopefully be a start to addressing some water quality issues on Upper Muddy Creek. I've met with Mark Lee, who I believe is also in Teton County. Al wrote a project with him out at his place and with GID 20, 30 years ago, 25 years ago. So I went out to kind of see how that's recovered. And I think that that's something that we can use for showcasing what can happen with the management practices. He's got a million different farm birds out there, a ton of, you know, plant diversity and whatnot. It, it looks like a healthy stream, you know? So there's still a little work to do that, that, some gates that still have a little bit of erosion or whatnot. But overall, it looks really great. So I think that's a really good opportunity for an after photo and something that we could use for public education and outreach. Working on weed stuff also. I think I mentioned to you when I was here before, there's a Great Falls teacher named Dan Wilkins, who's got a Pull Your Share program. He takes students out and they pull weeds at various sites. And he's looking to expand the program this year. So I'll be talking to him about where we might want to expand it, if we want to stay in Sun Canyon or if there, you know, opportunities in other places, and then where, where we can get funding for. So I think he and Eric can apply for some grants for that. And then I wanted to let you guys know about some upcoming meetings that we have. Sun River Watershed Group coordinates a water management working group. I'm sure you guys have participated in that at some level back when Al was here. But our next meeting is October 24th at 1:00 p.m. That'll be in the basement conference room at First Interstate Bank in Great Falls on Northwest Third. So that's where we talk about, we kind of review the irrigation season and talk about forecasting for this winter and weather forecasting. We're going to talk a bit, a bit about snow tell sites and our gauges, review our gauges a bit. So our other working group that's meeting this month is the Water Quality Working Group. And that's October 30th at 1:00 p.m. That one's going to be at the Great Falls Chamber of Commerce Basement Conference Room in Great Falls. And so we have over 20 years of water quality data that's been collected from the same spots on the Sun River. And we recently had MSU do a trend analysis. So the scientists that did that work for us is going to give a presentation on how, how we've been doing, where we might want to focus future work, what are some concerns that are still ongoing based on the trends over the past 20 years. And then we're going to talk about some water quality monitoring. And then our, our next board meeting for the Sun River Watershed is December 5th at GID at 1:00 p.m. And those meetings are open to public. And that is all I have.
Yeah, I have a question on that channel migration map of Sun River. Is that a similar map available for the Teton, you know?
You, you can do those of any, any system. It's really helpful if there's a lot of historic photos, if there's a lot of, if, if radar's been flown, which I, I think we have on the sun just way up on some of the tributaries. I don't know if we have it on the main stem, so that'll be interesting to find out. But we, basically, we have a 223 grant for $20,000. And then DEQ gave us another $4,500. So we're pulling those together and hiring someone to create the map. So it's definitely something you could do on the, on the Teton. And I can share any information about what we put together and.
Yeah, as that comes together, I'd be interested in putting one together on the Teton.
Sure. And I can send you some examples from other watersheds where they've done it, so you can see what our finished product will be.
But I think, Jim, really the key is what do you have to compare it to? In other words, I wouldn't spend a bunch of money to take current photos if you have nothing to compare it to.
But the channel migration study is also meant to help mitigate future problems. And you're looking at the propensity for the river to migrate and, and land uses and land alterations and, and just Mother Nature, what her tendencies are to move the channel. And the historical thing, you know, the key to the present is the past and kind of look at how things have gone on in the past. I'm not sure, is, is your property aligned with Cascade County, the location of the current river? Or is it based on some survey data? I think Cascade County's moving the river north on purpose. But, but I know that you guys shared that boundary with Cascade.
Lewis and Clark.
And Lewis and Clark, yeah, on the upper end.
Yeah. And those came about, this project came about because we had resource meetings in each county that were headed up by, you know, Paula and the other district conservationists and the conservation districts. So the, one of the top concerns that came out from each county's meetings were bank stability. And there, people are tired of losing their land. So part of this tool, hopefully, will be to help people understand that that's what rivers do. And you can't just rip rap it and turn it into a canal. You have to know it's going to move. And what they've done, like on the Yellowstone, they're starting to do conservation, not conservation easements, but channel migration zone easements, where basically they prioritize different reaches and they assess value to the land. And they can basically pay landowners out for the fact that they are probably going to lose their property. So I don't know how long it would take us to get there because it takes a really long time to figure out where's all that money going to come from? How do we assess the value of the land? How do we prioritize where we do those? It's something that's like on my radar and our working group has talked about it a little bit. But we're certainly not to the point where we are ready to say, we're going to do easements, you know? But, but that is one use for these maps.
And I think that's important because a lot of people do try and attempt to control the river in their little, small segment of land ownership. And what they end up doing, since the river has a potential for erosion, they armor their section and they pass that erosive, rotability down to their neighbor. And then the, the erosion can be more aggressive because, you know, you haven't slowed it down at all. Like Tracy mentioned, the river erosion is a natural process, but we don't, you know, we don't tend to look at it that way.
Well, what, what we're up against is having a road that parallels the river. And what do you do in that scenario? And I agree with, with what you just said about, well, we're just going to move it down the, down the line a little bit. But when you do, and so, you know, on the Sun River, there may be, it may be just like, well, I want to protect this building or this fence line or whatever it might be. But in, in the case of the Teton, when you've got a huge investment in a road, what do you do short of armoring that area that's actually encroaching on the road? I, I don't know what the answer is.
And, and armory, armory can be done and it can protect your structure or infrastructure. And it can also do what, what it's trying to do is eat up some of the energy. So rather than just pass the problem down and say, good, I'm protected, you protect yourself and you also look downstream. So there's a right way to do it. There's an easy way to do it. And then you just, like I say, this channel migration study will hopefully identify those, those issues. We've also seen areas where people have riverfront property. And next thing you know, the stream cuts in Oxbow and you're left with a swamp in, in front of your place because the river's on the new course. So it's, and, and this study may, may serve just as education for people to understand the big picture. Be more accepting to the, the natural process.
We just got an email, first part of the week, from Nancy Morehouse at the Conservation District. On the 29th, I think it's 6 o'clock at the stage stop, they're having a water meeting. And I forget all particulars, but it's going to talk somewhat about, I think the Teton's included in there. But this may be a good tie-in to bring up at that time the channel migration study.
So.
If I didn't give that email to, I'll email Nancy.
Yeah, that's the governor, Lieutenant Governor's draft advisory update and future, future water supply and, and.
I don't know if, unless it came in while I was driving to GID, I didn't get it. So if you could forward it to me, that'd be great.
Yeah, we put the poster up on our, on our door. I can give you a copy of the printout and everything.
That's good. All right, anybody have any questions, Tracy?
Yep, I have one on the weed, the concept of weed pulls. I would, and maybe you're already doing this, but I would strongly suggest getting the weed coordinators from the counties to be involved. Because, you know, they're, they're going to have a good idea of, is, is this actually something that is going to be beneficial other than just a feel-good, somebody went out and pulled a bunch of weeds today? Which isn't always, you know, picking the right spot where you can be effective makes all the difference in the world. And to me, a weed coordinator would be able to help kind of point in a direction of, well, weed pulling by hand might actually be beneficial here. And over here, you're kind of spinning your wheels, so.
Yeah, so we, we worked with, on this Pull Your Share, last year we worked with Jim from the Forest Service. And I got some advice from the weed coordinators. And then, of course, we have our annual Weed Whacker Rodeo every July. And Mark comes out for that as well. Mark and Kevin both came last year. So I do, I do actually, I, I came to the weed roundtable meeting this past, what was it, was it last month or this month? It falls a blur. But yeah, I work pretty closely with them to recommend places. And Mark gave a nice napweed pulling talk at our, at our weed pull, so.
Yep.
But it's really great for the kids. A lot of them, you know, asked a lot of questions and when can we come do this again and stuff, so.
Well, you know, it's a great way for, to get them to be able to identify napweed in a, I mean, after a day of hand-pulling, you know nap. I mean, after a day of hand pulling, you know napweed when you see it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Tracy, and everyone else for their comments. I don't have anything to report on.
I was just going to bring that meeting on the 29th. I think it would be important for people to look at that. It sounds like it's going to be.
It's the 30th.
One of the stage stops.
I'm thinking it's the 30th, but I could be wrong.
I could be wrong.
The only one I got compared was on February 4th.
29th.
Okay, you're right.
Six, did you say? 6:00 PM?
6:00. 6 o'clock at the stage stop.
Is there a happy hour to that or?
Says refreshments will be
Well, that's Tuesday night, okay.
Okay, the public comment.
I just wanted to do uh with respect to the Teton Conservation District, which I am a kind of adjunct member. I don't assume on the board, but appreciate Jim coming to our meeting um the other day. And I like to see the county there every so often. And appreciate you guys coming to our our GID meeting and giving us updates from the county. And I guess I can give you an update on Willow Creek, although it's on the other side of the river. But I don't know if a lot of people are interested. We we hope to start moving water today to start refilling it. If not, um, it would be tomorrow. You know, just Murphy's Law. We think we can get everything finished up today. Pull the dike and and start running water over there. But the guys, they normally, this time of year, they work four tens. But they said, uh, if they need to, they'll come in tomorrow and finish it up so they can get water moving over. So that that long frustrating process of of draining the reservoir and filling all the fish is coming to an end, so. So we got half of it fixed. So as we, as we're filling the reservoir, we can then focus our repairs on what's called the regulating gate, which is downstream with the guard gate, which uh we can do throughout the winter as the reservoir's filling. As long as the guard gate's functioning properly and isolating the work area from the rest of the reservoir. So that's going well.
All right. Thank you for that, all right. Anybody have anything else? Okay, our next meeting will be the 7th of November. Before adjournments.
How do you, how do you, how do you do a half hour meeting? You need to show me your secret.
Used to be a five minutes.
Yeah, we, we stretched them out to a half hour. Looks like a spare.